Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 26, 2018, meeting of the Wakefield School Committee in our temporary allocation here at the Galvin Middle School. Also an appreciation to the school committee for being flexible in some rescheduling that needed to be done. And also, as in all things that happen in town, great thanks to WCAT for being able to not only manage what's going on in the studio now, but to be able to have folks here at Galvin to accommodate the meeting. So, thanks to all of our friends and hard workers at WCAT. I'd like to call in the meeting to order. And if we could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chairs are a little noisy here than at the WCAT. As we do at all meetings, I'd like to read the mission statement. It is the vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Item number five on the agenda is to welcome any public comment, the many members of the public who may seek to address the school committee on any matter, whether it's on the agenda or not. Seeing none, we will move on to our student advisory council. So, we have two, we have three of Wakefield's finest with us tonight, representatives from Wakefield Memorial High School. Ladies, please, come up to the table, introduce yourselves, and welcome to the school committee.
We are the 2018 School Committee Representatives. My name is Lily Smith, and I'm a junior.
I'm Adriana Manassion, and I'm a junior also.
Hi, I'm Amanda Westlake. I was on the senior advisory council, or the representative of the school committee last year, and I'm a senior.
And we're really excited to be here tonight, so thank you for your time. And we're excited that the school year is just starting. Everyone's still getting adjusted to their schedules, but we're excited.
This week at the high school, it's Spirit Week, so everybody's having a good time picking out their outfits, getting into the themes, and everybody seems to enjoy it. And then, this Friday, we have another home football game, so that's getting everybody excited as well.
Last night was Financial Aid Night at the high school, which was very informative, and there were a lot of parents and students in attendance. It was a really great resource for students who are looking into college affordability. There also continued to be college visits. Just the other day, I know we had Merrimack, Quinnipiac, and Stonewall College all come and visit, and a lot of students have been attending those, and those are also really useful for students and seniors. The exchange students from Italy will be here soon, which everyone's really excited about for the foreign exchange program. And then, it'll be in the spring when students from Wakefield go to Italy.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Wait, don't leave yet. There's much more, much, much more. There'll be a quiz later. Any members of the school committee have something for the students?
The Italy exchange, is that like alternating years with Switzerland, or is it instead of Switzerland?
Yes, last year was Switzerland, and this year is Italy.
Okay, so it's not replacing, it's just augmenting?
Yes, Ms. Fordia.
So, last year, we had a student who attended every other meeting. I think it was the non-businessy one, the one that's more curriculum-oriented. Is that going to be the case with any one of you who will be attending our meetings when you can?
We're still talking over with Mrs. McLeod to try to determine, like, the best way we can do it, but it's definitely something we'd be interested in doing.
Okay.
Yeah, we're trying to set up like a schedule for all of us, at least two of us, to come to every single meeting.
So, we're gonna try and alternate with that?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
I think the idea was to actually stay and participate in the conversation.
Sure, for sure.
Oh, yeah, that's what I meant. Instead of just presenting, you know, coming and being a part of our meeting and letting us hear your input. So, when you get that nailed down, just, I think, probably let Mr. Markham know, so that we can make sure that you guys have the packet, so that you can be prepared if there's anything that's of interest, and you can share it with... Do you have other members of your advisory, or are you guys at...
We have one more, but he couldn't make it tonight.
Okay.
To Latin.
Oh, to Latin, okay. So, we want to make sure that you're, you know, a big part of our meeting, and as much as you want to be. We understand that stuff comes up, midterms, Latin. Anyone taking Latin?
No.
So sad.
It's too late. It is too late.
Anyway, that's great. So, just let us know what you think your schedule might be, and if it changes, that's fine. But we just want to know your email addresses, so we can send you the package.
Sure.
Judy will send it to you as well, okay?
Thank you.
Great, great. Well, ladies, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to that senior drop here. Okay, moving on, the consent agenda. We have a motion.
I want the school committee to approve the minutes of the September 12, 2018, school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Something that Judy mentioned as we were walking in, that the call to order makes a reference to an executive session. That was a typo. We did not have an executive session, so I wanted to say that out loud. We did not have an executive session. We did tour the Walton School, and that will be replaced. The tour of the Walton School will replace the executive session reference. Motion's been made and seconded. We've now made reference to an amendment. Would you accept a friendly motion to amendment, rather?
Yes.
Very good. So, a motion made and seconded. Any other comments?
Just that I'm abstaining, since I didn't attend.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? The passes four in favor and one abstention. Okay, moving along. Item number eight, the chair's action items. Item number eight A, general comments and updates. I'd actually like, and I didn't want to impose upon you, Greg, if I may, just to have a general comment about Saturday's workshop. I know that was... I wasn't able to attend, but I saw some really good tweets and Facebook posts about it, and some nice revelry around it, but if you wouldn't mind speaking to that.
Yeah, yeah, no, and Doug, of course, jumped in here too as well. So, the group that put the meeting together is an informal group. It's called Civitas. Includes Dave Watts from WCAT, former school committee member Bill Chetwind, Mark Luca, and a school committee member from Melrose, with whom many of us have spoken over the years, named Ed O'Connell. And their purpose, I think, is twofold. It's to look at the state of civic discourse, civic dialogue in the community, both communities, actually, both Melrose and Wakefield. They want it to be a kind of an inter-community effort. And to look in relation to that at the role of civic education, both in school and out of school, in both fostering healthy civic dialogue, and also, you know, the role of civics in education, and how important that is. So, it was a really, really interesting discussion. I think I was the only Wakefield elected official, but Steve Mayo, the town administrator, was there. There were parents and local residents, both from Melrose and Wakefield. We had some breakout sessions. I say local elected officials, but State Representative Paul Broder and State Senator Jason Lewis were both there. They weren't there for the entire time, but they did participate in the first sessions. And it was really good. I mean, I think what they did was just kind of lay out the principles, I think, of what good civic discourse looks like, and got some feedback from the attendees about, you know, what they would like to see in fostering healthier civic discourse, sort of overcoming differences, making sure we're civil to one another, that we're approaching dialogue with, in good faith, approaching public conversations in a healthy, constructive way. And then, gave us a chance a little bit to talk about the role of the schools, and that's where I'd asked Doug to maybe chime in. Jason Pavy was also in attendance.
Yes, we had the social studies, history and social studies curriculum coordinator, Jason Pavy, was present at the meeting, along with middle school principal Adam Coltoni.
That's right, that's right.
And so, and one of the things that I believe that we brought was just the perspective of how we can support this work in our schools. Additionally, it's timely, because the new history/social science curriculum frameworks are just newly released, and there's a specific strand that relates to civics, and a new course and new topics that will be covered at the middle school level in regard to civics. But it also calls for civics and engagement in civics and civic discourse to be integrated through our K through 12 curriculum. And so, the meeting was, I think, timely, and I think well-attended for just starting the conversation. I think we probably had thirty, thirty-five people there. And I think that it was a really nice way to start an open conversation about how we can do this work, and support students to also engage in this work.
Right, and I think one specific idea that came up, there were lots of good ideas that were raised, but one specific idea would be to, and I think this was Doug's, actually, maybe the next phase of the conversation would be to bring in some young people, some students from the high school, maybe, if you were available, and maybe some of your friends at Wakefield Memorial High School, to really elicit from them, you know, what does civic participation look like for you, and what can we do as a community to make it a better experience, make our town government, you know, the important decisions that we make as a community, make them more accessible to young people, so you feel like you have an active role in the future of the community, so.
No, I would agree, Greg, completely. I think, you know, one of the things that I believe we discussed in our meeting is the standards alone. Our curriculum standards don't guarantee good outcomes, or that we'll be successful. It's really about being able to support you, and engage you, and to hear and listen to your perspective around things that are important to you, things that you want to work toward, not only at the high school and in all of our schools, but in the community at large as well. And so, we're just kind of putting you on notice that we're gonna ask if you'd like to join us in the coming months, and I think that if you could do that, that would be, it would absolutely kind of enrich the conversation, and add a perspective that we didn't have in our first meeting, so.
So, yeah, so a good start, and certainly a role for the school committee as a whole to play as the conversation moves forward.
Good, thank you, Greg. Next on the agenda is just a discussion around our recent tour of the Doyle School as a follow-up to our last meeting. A commitment was made by the school committee to make sure that we got a chance to visit the school and to see the types of things, and to understand some of the concerns that were brought to us by numerous parents at our last meeting, both in person and in some emails that we received. On last Friday, the school committee had an opportunity to tour the school, as well as earlier tonight. And one of the things that I would like to say from the onset is, while it's certainly unfortunate that there were concerns raised, what is, I'm certainly pleased that they were. I mean, bringing forward information is the right of every parent, is the right of every concerned parent. A parent needs to be the largest advocate for their own child, right? So, bringing these concerns forward is always appropriate, and is always the right, you know, venue. But more importantly than that, I was very pleased, and I toured the school this afternoon. I wasn't able to make the Friday sessions, but did with the superintendent and the principal this afternoon. And very, very pleased to see the work that's been done in a very relative short time. The Doyle staff and the leadership of the district obviously took to heart a number of the concerns, as well as trying to balance the needs of the teachers. And I think that, I think there's an awful lot of appreciation to go around for that, starting with, of course, again, the parents that brought concerns forward. This is always an appropriate place to do just that. I would like to ask the superintendent to fill in a little bit here to inform the school committee, there were things that occurred Monday and Tuesday. For those of you that visited on Friday, Monday and Tuesday is a different day than Friday was, so I get to see what happened Monday and Tuesday. But nonetheless, some real movement and real progress has been made, and I'd ask the superintendent to fill us in on that.
Yeah, I think before I start, in regard to the work that took place, I would like to say thank you to parents who've kind of gave us very good feedback, and asked kind of the right questions to really get us to focus on the instructional spaces and how they were being used. One of the first things that we did after our last school committee meeting was we convened a teacher team of volunteers who came together, and they developed a plan how to more effectively use the spaces at the Doyle School. And so, you know, we went back to the teachers to really pose this question, or reflect this question back to them, and the plan that they created was the plan that we implemented, actually, today. But before we implemented the plan, school committee came to visit the spaces to see the challenges in regard to the room sizes, and in regard to the class sizes. We know that we needed all of the instructional spaces at hand at the Doyle, but, you know, what we did, the changes that we made, and the changes that the teachers made, were really to kind of better utilize those spaces to improve teaching and learning. And I really can't thank faculty and staff enough for their willingness to work together, to plan, to come up with solutions, and to also be willing to move their spaces. So, Parents' Night is tomorrow night, or Back to School Night is tomorrow night at Doyle, and I think parents will see that room changes have been made, again, to better utilize spaces. And if you have questions about that moving forward, I would urge you to contact myself or the principal, Shannon Blacker. And again, I think that this all started with your questions and your feedback, so it's much appreciated. And a special thanks to faculty and staff who made all of this happen. So, thank you very much.
Great. Any member of the committee have any thoughts or comments regarding this? Yes, Greg?
So, since I didn't get to attend the last meeting, I just wanted to say, you know, notwithstanding the issues around communication, because it sounds like we learned some lessons, right, as a district around communication, and adding my thanks to the parents for bringing these issues to light. The thing that I was struck by when I walked through with you, Doug and Chris, and Colleen on Friday, was, I think the first thing that I would want to emphasize and reassure the public, public at large, who may, you know, not have the level of detailed knowledge about what's going on at the Doyle, is that school is an amazing place.
It is.
The quality, the quality of the spaces, and the quality of the teaching are, you know, at the highest level. And when you walk through those spaces and you see all the factors that go into creating a safe, appropriate, educationally appropriate space for students at that level, you realize what an incredible, incredibly complex process that is. And then, we were fortunate to be there early in the morning before the students were coming, and you could see the preparation that was happening from the staff there, and it's really, really remarkable. So, anyway, I think, you know, in a way, the problems that were brought to light by the parents gave us an opportunity to kind of see what's going on there, and despite the challenges and some bumps along the way, I think it's worth emphasizing that what's happening in that school is really amazing learning for our youngest students, so just wanted to emphasize that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, excellent, thank you. Yep. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to, we have a motion with regard to bringing forward a school committee official request for a town meeting, a warrant article for the November meeting with regard to replenishing and establishing appropriate level of funding for the Special Education Stabilization Fund. Mr. Cowan has a motion, and we'll discuss.
The school committee requests placement of a warrant article on the November 2018 town meeting for the purpose of requesting a FY19 supplemental funding to the Special Education Stabilization Fund in the amount of $500,000. Such funding shall, in compliance with the requirements of the fund, be to replenish and increase the amount available to the town to support the required special education services of students of the Wakefield Public Schools.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Cowan.
I just would like to note for the record that, you know, this is, this fund was established several years ago at a much lower level. In conversations with the FinCom last year, we all, the FinCom and the members of the Finance Subcommittee agreed that we should have been replenishing this fund all along, and we might have been less of an emergent condition last spring had we been doing that, and that the level originally established several years ago was going to be inadequate. And also note that although the fund hopefully will get replenished at town meeting, we are not allowed to utilize those funds without a two-thirds vote of town meeting.
And that's a critically important thing to remind the committee, but remind the public that this request is to effectively refund the fund, which we only have access to upon another town meeting warrant article requesting access to those funds, which would be in the spring, or potentially even next fall.
Or potentially not at all.
Or potentially not at all, right, right, yep. So, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Yes?
Just a question. Can you remind us how much is currently in the fund?
Near zero.
It is near zero, okay.
Seven thousand dollars, maybe, or it's, yeah, we used all but most of it.
Because the money that was, once the money came out and came to the school department, and then what we, because of the additional funding we got from the state, we didn't have to use it all. And we sent it back, but it can't go back to the fund, it has to go to general, free cash.
Right. So, okay, yes, Ms. Fordia.
So, the idea would be to keep this fund at 500,000?
Yes.
So that we, if we need to next spring, take out 100,000, we would then request another 100,000 to just, you know, keep it funded at 500 always?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not what this motion does. That is a conversation for, as we engage town officials in the FY20 budget development and leading into spring town meeting, that certainly we got a very, as Mr. Cowan referenced, got a very affirmative support from town officials last year about 500,000 being a reasonable amount for the fund, which is why, when we're making this request, it is, you know, it is with the full awareness and expectation that it will be favorably received.
Right.
But as far as establishing either guidelines or policy, this does not do that. This is to make a single-time ask to appropriate 500,000, and the larger conversation would occur during budget talks next winter and spring.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. President?
Just one quick clarification. In the past, what was that fund at?
Three seventy-five? Two seventy-five?
Was it usually always two seventy-five, year after year, and then it was increased to 500, and now we, it's gonna stay?
It's never been increased to 500. We're asking 500 for the first time.
And I think it was more than two seventy-five, but I don't remember the exact amount.
Okay.
But what happened is, you know, the first year, it was there, we used some of it, and then we failed to ask to be replenished. And then, for a couple of years, we didn't ask for any at all. And then, last year, we needed what was left, and all we could ask for was what was left, because it had never been replenished.
When was that first year?
Dr. Zright was here, so it was four years ago.
FY14, maybe?
Yeah.
We made the request, and I believe we made the request to establish the fund in FY13, and it worked its way through the process, and I think FY14 was the first year of the fund.
And now, it's 500 because of what was needed last year?
Not necessarily. Certainly, because of what happened last year, and even in the past, we've come to the assumption, the belief, that what it had been funding at was not adequate.
Okay.
Trends?
But, yeah, trends. But this amount, remember that any dollar amount is not at our discretion.
Yeah.
We do not have, only the floor of town meeting has control over this fund. That is sort of the beauty of it, that it exists at the discretion of the town. So, we are making a request that it be funded at an adequate level, so if the need be, that we would then go to town meeting in the spring or next fall, and ask for access to available funds.
Thank you.
Just to add to Amy's question, the 500,000 level was also one that several of the members of the Finance Committee suggested would be essentially a good, healthy cushion for us, so.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's vaguely coming to me, for the sake of trying to answer, I think 330,000 is available.
Yeah, I think it was three-something, yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, so that was the original levels, and the first couple of years of the fund, just for, we didn't really have a sense of need, so we took some, you know, very educated and fair guesses in working with the town finance committee to establish the fund and to populate it. Okay, motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. We will pass this request on in an official way to the town administrator in the morning, and then town council, meaning Mr. Mullin, will draft the language that will ultimately go before the townspeople. Okay, item eight, a D, the school committee retreat. It seemed that the best date, again, was, or is, Saturday, October 20th. So, I'd like to establish that. That's one of the two or three dates that sort of landed as good dates for us as a group at the last meeting, talking with Doug, and confirming with MASC, and making initial outreach to a couple places who would be interested in hosting us. That date also seems to be working. So, can we land on Saturday, October 20th as a date?
I may, I'm not quite sure if I can make that one. I can do, I could do the 27th, but the 20th, I just have another obligation, I'll see if I can get out of it.
Okay, Amy?
Two things, the timing of it? Is it like a nine to five, or?
No.
Eight to?
We were thinking more like eight to two.
Okay.
You know, something like that. Certainly be out mid-afternoon, that's for sure.
And is it okay if you came a little late, or like?
Well, we can, I mean, the time is ours to establish. I mean, and I'm not to put you on the spot at all, so please, I would love us to land on a date that all seven of us could be there. And if that truly doesn't work for you, let's find another date.
No, that date works for me.
No, I meant Ann.
Oh, okay.
And the timing too, Amy.
Yeah, okay.
If eight's too early, or nine's too late, or let's land on things that work for us, because I think the value of the conversation that we can have in this informal sort of way far outweighs the trappings of the formality of a meeting. So, I really want it to work for us.
I'll see what I can do to...
Okay, and just shoot me an email, or give me a ring, and if it doesn't, and then we'll find more dates.
Yep.
Okay, good. Next thing is the MASC, MAS Fall Conference. I assume... I assume we've all got this flyer in the mail and if anyone had a chance to read it, there's really some good workshops that are being planned for that time. I would encourage any of my colleagues to consider going. It's really, it's really a good opportunity to not only share concerns with other members, with other towns who are dealing with lots of the same things we are, but also a chance to have some really good workshops by some really talented, you know, facilitators. So, I put that out there once again. Eight F. I just wanted to say a couple of opening thoughts around the agenda item eight F, which is the superintendent's calls and the evaluation planning for FY19 and then ask the superintendent to sort of backfill some of my thinking. One that I wanted to mention, just to assure the committee and ensure the community that this is a conversation that the superintendent and I have been having. It hasn't been on the agenda sort of, you know, yet, but it certainly, it is not lost. The importance and the value of it has not been lost, so I wanted to assure everyone of that. Number two, the first year of, and we've come to experience this night, I shared with Doug a little tongue-in-cheek that, you know, we've experienced first years of superintendents now, like four times in six years. So, we're getting pretty good at this first year superintendent thing. But in all seriousness, so it's not uncommon for the evaluation, well, the goal setting and then the evaluation to sort of be out of sync with the last year and then the second year. So, I don't want that to seem like this is not on our radar screen or that this time of year is not convenient. So, having said that, the type of things that Doug and I have been talking about is establishing a timetable, which he's going to speak to in a few moments, but then making sure that there was some synchronicity to district, obviously, goals, to the establishment of the, of the subcommittees and the important work of the subcommittees, all four of them having important work this year. And I think Doug deserves the time to really invest some thinking into that as opposed to hopping out in September with a game plan or here in October with a game plan. So, I think that in also having some tie-in to the budget planning and budget development processes is an important key there. So, I certainly would offer any member of the committee to either ask a question or raise a concern publicly or reach out to me privately, but I just wanted to make sure that the committee and the community knew that Doug and I were having these conversations and that that work was moving forward. Doug, can you just add to that or some of your thinking around?
Sure. So, one of the things that School Committee Chair Tom Arkham and I have been talking about is just this notion of my work with the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and the new superintendent's induction program. And so, one of the things that by participating in that program, one of the things that new superintendents are supported and encouraged to do is to develop a transition plan or an entry plan when moving from one position to the next, but especially to the superintendency, and to really be thoughtful and to research any goal-setting, to do your research to get the background and do some analysis and collect data around why you're looking to affect change in certain areas. And I do think, I agree with Tom, that I think the goals that I will be looking to set will be based on the data that I do collect, but I also think that it will in fact intersect with our subcommittee work. So, our work on the Student Services Subcommittee, Policy and Communications, Finance and Facilities, as well as Labor Relations. So, I would be anticipating, I'm looking to kind of create goals that will probably intersect with at least three of those four subcommittees. And I think as they rightly should. And so, there might be a fourth goal, not connected to that subcommittee work, but it will also kind of relate to our instructional strategy and other priorities that we have in the district. So, in regard to creating a timeline, I think I'll be working with Tom on that and I would have a draft of my goals that I would like to present to the committee after I collect data with my entry plan and that will be in December. And so, obviously, I have a working draft now, but in regard to presenting, sharing and also presenting action steps and some data to substantiate why those goals I think are critical, I think that I would like to present that probably at the second meeting in December. That's where we're at right now. I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has a question.
I think there's only one meeting in December.
Oh, okay.
You could be here on Christmas Day.
Christmas Day. I was going to say, our Christmas meeting.
It's really that important that we should meet on Christmas Day. Fair enough.
Yeah.
Fair enough. Okay. Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, moving on. Item nine, superintendents' reports and recommendations. Ms. Lyons.
So, thank you, Tom. This evening, I have three items. Two of the items, I'm seeking approval from the school committee for field trips on behalf of two teachers. The first trip that I'm seeking approval for is the Quebec trip, which is an annual trip at Galvin Middle School. It is facilitated and run and coordinated by Roseanne Bacos and she's done an amazing job with it. She has shared a video that I will be happy to send to school committee that kind of highlights parts of their trip. This has been kind of a hallmark of kind of the experience at middle school. Students stay at the Chateau, excuse me, the Chateau La Riree and I think it's really a great three-day trip. And so, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Information is enclosed in the school committee packet, but we are seeking approval of this trip from the school committee for, again, it's a three-day trip that will take place in May. And so, I don't know if anyone has questions?
Certainly. Yep. Motion first?
I move the school committee approve the Quebec City, Canada field trip for the Galvin Middle School students from May 22 through May 25 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Fordy.
Just a question. I was looking just through the paperwork and I had noticed that a nurse can't attend the trip. And is that, I can't remember if we have a policy around that sort of thing. Is it just if we have a student who requires that type of service, then we have to have a nurse or, and otherwise, we don't need one? I just needed some.
Yeah. It's my understanding, Anne, that if a student has a need, then we've presented a number of different ways to accommodate students. And so, sometimes the nurse has been provided by the trip providers or the company that we're contracting with. And sometimes it's provided on-site, which is a separate contract as well. But if a student has a medical need, I think that we've tried to make every accommodation to provide 100% access for our students. And so, you know, and so, it's not uncommon for our school nurses to be unable to attend trips where people are traveling internationally overnight.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. I just couldn't remember. Yeah. I was just going to say, both my girls went on this trip and I don't remember if the nurse went with them or not.
Yeah.
But I was just, I was just wondering. That's all. Thank you.
Certainly.
And then just for the record, I did contact the superintendent about this because the number of chaperones listed on the sheet does not comply with our policy and I believe Ms. Lyons has contacted the teacher and ensured that the policy will be adhered to?
I assure you that the policy will be adhered to. I reached out to the teacher and I think that her work number was three chaperones anticipating that they would have 30 students. If they have more than that, then they will make every accommodation to ensure that they adhere to the 10 to 1 ratio.
Good. Thank you.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Trip number two.
The second trip that we are seeking approval for is the trip to Rome and Athens. This trip is presented on behalf of our Italian language teacher, Lucia DiMello. This is a trip that we've done in the past and the trip that's being presented tonight will take place on April 16, 2020. So, this is trying to give as much advance notice both to students and families to give them the best opportunity to raise money if they need to, to participate in this trip. And so, we made this trip this past year and it was just tremendously successful. These, this type of trip with this kind of cultural relevance is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime for, often for many of our, if not all of our students, not only to go and see the sites but to also learn about the culture, be immersed in the culture, as well as the languages that are spoken there. And so, we'd be seeking approval. It's already been approved by our principal and Lucia is excited and they have, I think chaperones are bidding for this trip now. And so, I think it'll be an exciting, an exciting trip again.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Only if I'm allowed to go. The move the school committee approve the Greece, Italy field trip for Wakefield Memorial High School students to take place during April school vacation, April 16 through 25, 2020 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you very, thank you very much. My third item is just an informational item to keep the committee and the community informed about our NEASC accreditation team that will be visiting the high school on this Friday. And so, NEASC, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, is the accrediting body which accredits the high school in regard to their academic programs as well as the facility in which students are learning. And so, we think that this is timely because this is just before our October 16 MSBA meeting where members of MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Association, will be coming to make a site visit to assess the facility at the high school as well, which is, I shared this in an earlier meeting, which is kind of a second step of four steps that you need to make to move into or be considered to partner with MSBA to get funding, to make renovations or to build a new school. And so, our NEASC visit on Friday will be, the team that is visiting will meet with the administration, will meet with members of facilities, they will tour the school, they will look at academic programmings, and myself and the Assistant Superintendent Caramoro will also meet with the team at the end of the day. So, it'll be about a four-hour visit in total, but we think that this is actually timely, coming just before our MSBA visit. And I think that, we hope that it will inform some of our work with MSBA. So, we're pleased to be having this done now. So, that's where we're at there. I don't know if anyone has any questions on the visit?
Was this something you needed anything from the committee on?
Nope. This is, we don't need anything from the committee on this particular visit. We will need representation from school committee on the October 16 MSBA visit. That will be kind of an all-hands event. We anticipate having our legislators there, our town administrator there, and so, you know, there'll be more information forthcoming on that.
Great.
Thank you for the question.
Okay.
Ms. Yackles?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I just wanted to clarify, is this visit part of their periodic re-accreditation process?
It is.
Okay.
It is.
Yeah.
So, we've submitted information that they have asked for, just in terms of, they've asked for follow-up information to see how the facility is being improved, how it's holding up, have changes been made, and so, they're coming out to see those things.
Right.
And I think.
And when, and, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, but just a follow-up question. Will there be a formal report that is given back to us at some point?
So, I'll be working with the principal and we will take whatever information that they provide us and report it back to school committee. And if they do provide us a formal report, I'd be absolutely certain, or I will be sure to provide that to the school committee as well.
They did last time, it was a very detailed report.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was like a whole binder.
Yeah.
When was the last visit?
Four years. Four or five years.
This is my fourth year and they haven't come during that time.
I mean, Ms. Landers was here at the time, so.
Is that normally how the process works?
Five years.
Every four or five?
Maybe longer, it might be longer.
Accreditation is every 10 years, but they usually have a mid-year, mid-cycle.
Mid-cycle progress reporting?
Which would have been five years ago when they would have visited for something similar to this.
But the last big accreditation, Ms. Landers was the superintendent.
Okay.
So, 10 years? Is it 18, yeah? 2008 or 19, so 2009 probably.
Could have been.
Okay. Any other comments from the superintendent or from the superintendent?
Oh.
Yes?
Just a question, Doug. I've just been from afar reading a little bit about the updates to the state assessment system and the related work that districts are going to be called upon to do in terms of their district report cards that reflect the new, the new school assessment system. Can you tell us how, what, where we're at in Wakefield in terms of keeping up with that process?
Sure. Right now, the scores have not been made public. They will be made public Friday at midday. Right now, the scores are embargoed and with the scores also comes the information around accountability. And we plan making a report to school committee after these scores are made public. But I think the plan right now is to make a report to school committee probably in November around changes with accountability. I've discussed some of the changes here already.
Yeah.
And they have, so the levels one, two, three, four and five are, they've done away with those. There's a new MCAS 2.0. So, with the new assessment, the Department of Education has been very clear in saying, you know, we should not be making any correlations to, or connections to previous testing and we should, we should be looking at this as kind of a new start with data and the way the accountability rating is going to be situated will be similar to how the assessments are scored. And so, they're also taking into account additional factors and additional factors at different levels. At the high school level, they're adding in advanced courses that students are taking as well as dual enrollment populations. They're also looking at absenteeism as well as the achievement of our lowest quartile. So, that's a piece that we'll look at as well. So, before, we used to look at subcommittees, we, subgroups, excuse me. We will continue to do that, but now not only will we be looking at subgroups, now the bottom quartile will be used as a factor to determine accountability ratings. So, how we are accommodating some of our most vulnerable populations, they will use that and how those students are achieving and what their growth percentiles are to make a determination to how that will contribute to their rating in terms of where we fall on the new accountability scale. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Moving on. Do you have any gifts on the agenda tonight? I don't believe so. Okay. Subcommittee reports. This will be our first meeting of the reorganized subcommittees. I know that we've had two busy subcommittees. Have Finance and Facilities had a chance to meet yet?
No.
No? Fair enough. NOR has Labor Relations. So, we'll move right into Policy and Communications. Ms. Callanan.
Yeah. Policy, subcommittee has not met, but we do have a motion that was put, a policy was put on the table two weeks ago. Mr. Piflin had made a comment that that night that he thought there might be a change required, but I'd never heard anything.
If I may?
Please.
My apologies for not sending along the email, Mr. Callanan. It was oversight on my part. on my part. Uh, but there are two concerns brought up by a member of the community in the policy the way that it's written. Uh, if I may-
Please.
Express those, okay?
Please do.
Uh, on the first concern, uh, it says that the policy states that balance is owed with no response by the parent or guardian, the superintendent may, dot, 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 prohibit participation in the student, of the student in the program. That's bullet number two of the policy on the second page. It would be my recommendation that we strike that because I think bullet number three actually goes into more. We can't restrict them from the lunch program, and this is about meals, so I think it would be prudent to strike that bullet. Because this policy is about meals and charges, so we, I don't think our intention is to restrict them from participating in the, in the school lunch program.
Is there another concern?
There is another concern. Uh, the second concern is under section, uh, four C, which states, um, unclaimed funds, all refunds must be requested within one year. Unclaimed funds will then become the property of the Wakefield School Nutrition Office. Uh, the concerned member of our community said this appears to be contrary to Mass General Law two-hundred A and could potentially result in liability to the town. Uh, I would, I don't know about the law and the liability to the town, but I do believe that we do not have the right to retain those funds back into us, and I did speak with Ms. Morello, um, during one of our meetings, and, uh, we think that the better way to do would be to issue refunds to the family in the form of a check. If they don't deposit the check, then it becomes fine in massmoney.com, that whole thing, and, and the people can, will be notified in the future or can look up on the website and find that they have a check that hasn't been cashed. But it's then out of our accounts, it's now in the town's accounts, and, um, they can take it further from there. So, my recommendation is that we, we may have to reword that quickly, um, but, uh, and I apologize, I probably should have gotten this out sooner. Uh, just been working on some other things, so I apologize.
So, this is item four C, is, am I-
That's-
Have I jumped correctly to the right place?
Correct.
So, um, so let, let's, let's, if we could, uh, take them in the order that, uh, Mr. Piffling raised them, um, and I would, uh, ask members of the subcommittee to chime in on, um, on, uh, the reasonableness of, of having this, these amended in this way here on the floor, as opposed to kicking it back to the subcommittee, which of course is your purview as well. If you'd like to r- remove this from the agenda and bring it back to the subcommittee, I, I would support that. Do you have any thoughts?
I, I don't believe, in, in my opinion, that it needs to come back to the, the subcommittee. I think we, I'm sure that they have the, that, that was the purpose, putting something on the table, was to invite things.
Right.
And it's up to the full committee to make the final decision anyway. Um, so your suggestion is on item B, bullet two, is to delete that bullet?
Yes.
Okay. And on the refund, uh, who does the refund go to? The student, the parent?
Um, I think possibly we just strike that one also.
Strike the same-
Do, do strike it all together?
In lieu of coming up with a, a new rewriting of it and figuring out the laws and the liability and, and whatnot, um, don't, don't even discuss refunds, uh, or unclaimed funds, I'm sorry, leave refunds in there, but don't discuss, uh, unclaimed funds and let that be at the, um, administration's purview, but I, I don't want to make, take liberties that, that don't belong to us, but, uh, it might be, um, less cumbersome for us to work with the families in different ways to identify if we pass it on to another child in the family, if they want to donate it back to the district, if they want a refund check. There's several ways we can go with, uh-
Well, that's in, that's in the bullet above the C. It's, you know, graduate, students are graduating, will be given a refund. We could just leave it alone and just delete the C.
I think that would be-
I thought that's what he said.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, I, I think that the, the cleanest thing to do is just delete the C.
Yeah.
I agree.
So, move that we delete, uh, bullet two in section B that refers to, uh, prohibi- prohibiting participation and delete, uh, item three C, uh, completely.
Four C.
Four C.
Four C, uh, four, I'm sorry, three C, yeah. Uh, four C.
And, and the first one is, um, is, uh, section two A.
Two B.
Two B.
Two B.
Sorry, two B.
Two B bullet two.
Two B bullet two.
Bullet two.
Which is what I said.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we were there to say the section, so, just trying to help.
I think say B. I said two B.
Yeah.
Okay, so, that's a motion.
Or not.
That is a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Okay.
Any motion or second, um, any, any discussion? Uh, so, it, it has, i- i- if I may, just even as a member of the committee, not necessarily as chair at this point, I am thrilled that the, to, to have us, uh, delete item, the second bullet. Um, I think as a matter of philosophy and, and making sure that all students have an opportunity to have a meal if they need that, to, to penalize a student, um, uh, for the inaction of an adult, I think is, uh, is not appropriate on our part. So, I'm, I'm thrilled to see the committee, uh, taking that direction and thank Mr. Piffling and the citizen for bringing it up. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Did you have something else?
Nope.
Okay. Um, the student, uh, our Services Subcommittee, Ms. Fordyear.
We had our first, um, inaugural meeting of the Student Services Subcommittee last night, and our, um, our agenda consisted of putting together a mission, um, which also outlined the responsibilities of the subcommittee, and then we outlined, um, uh, our two priorities for this year, for this academic year, which doesn't necessarily mean they'll be completed this academic year, but those are, um, we have, we have those, um, outlined, and, um, I'm going to share my notes with the other members of the, uh, subcommittee so we can just make sure that, uh, I have it correct in, in the way that we want to present it, because, um, my, my aim is to then, uh, present the mission and our priorities to the, um, total school committee for approval, so then we can actually get our, start working. Does that make sense, the rest of you on the committee?
Absolutely.
And we, well, now at least we knew what the, we decided what to ask for. Yeah.
Pretty much, yeah. Yeah, it was good.
Yeah, definitely.
Good.
Okay, uh, future dates and agenda items, uh, next meeting of the school committee is, uh, two weeks from last night, uh, Tuesday, October nine. Um, in planning, um, the meeting after that, we may recall a discussion that was prompted, if I'm remembering correctly, by, um, by even Dr. Smith in the last month or so of June, uh, excuse me, of her time with us, um, the possibility of moving the, uh, Boston meeting that we have every year from the spring to the fall, uh, thereby the possibility of, of engaging, uh, the Boston families in a different way and a, in a different time of year. So, Mr. Lyons and I have been discussing that, um, and, uh, we have an eye on, uh, the possibility of doing that either the second meeting in October or the first meeting in November, which would be November thirteenth, or October, oh, help me with it, I gotta look it up, but-
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, thank you. Um, so, um, those would be regular Tuesday, regular Tuesday meetings, but, uh, with this opportunity and the invitation being originated, um, uh, by the medical program and the medical families, we thought that we might try out the, uh, the fall as opposed to a spring meeting.
What were the two dates, the fall, the end of October?
Uh, October twenty-three-
Yeah.
Or November thirteen.
Oh, okay, thank you.
They're both regularly scheduled Tuesday meetings, so, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thirteenth is better for me.
Thirteenth is better for you? Okay. Very good. Uh, okay, uh, any other, uh, future agenda items or discussions, um, that members would like to see on future agendas? Okay, moving along.
So, are we just gonna decide the, the date, uh, of our next meeting, or?
Well, no, I'd like to, uh, so what I would like, I guess, is I wanted to say that we're, we're going to be following up on moving it to the fall, moving the Boston meeting to the fall, and, uh, ask the superintendent to coordinate with, uh, with, uh, Joel, uh, and his, and his team what may be the best of those two dates. Uh, because obviously, we're trying to get families in a location and all the other deets around the logistics, but-
Okay.
It'll be one of those two nights.
Got you.
Okay. Um, school committee comments, oh, any other agenda items or dates? Any questions there? No, seeing none. Um, agenda items and, uh, dates, uh, and we'll start at this end of the table because Amy always gets it first, so, how about Mr. Callanan?
Comments, or?
Yes, because school committee comments, yeah.
Um, I just want to, um, appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity to, to go down to the Doyle and, and see all the great things that were happening down there. Um, I, it truly is a happy place. Um, also, I just want to, uh, bring up the, uh, the marching band competitions that are coming up, uh, they're at two in a row, uh, on October thirteenth and October twentieth. Um, they're both Saturdays, uh, the, the October twentieth starts a little later, it's a little smaller show, uh, the, the thirteenth is, uh, completely sold out as far as the number of bands that we're able to accommodate. Uh, we even had to start a little earlier than, uh, than usual, and, uh, those are always, you know, spectacular, uh, days for, for Wakefield to shine, and, uh, the, the, the more people from the community that come out, the, the better.
Great. Mr. Leakos?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Also, Ms. Fordyear?
I'm all set, thank you.
Ms. Purcell?
I just want to commend also, um, all the work and the changes that were done at the Doyle, and, um, it was nice to be able to walk through, um, that school and, uh, see all the changes in it, and I agree with Chris, it's a really special place. So, thank you.
Very good. Um, I have no, I have no comments other than to agree with what others have already said, but, uh, certainly, kudos again, uh, to the administration and especially the, the Doyle faculty for really rallying, um, to bring up some probably organic solutions that, um, that are, that will be quite impactful to the students and, and their parents. And again, of course, thanks to the, the parents for raising, uh, concerns, uh, before us. Uh, without any further comments, the motion to adjourn.
Uh, move the school committee adjourn its meeting of, uh, Wednesday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you all, have a pleasant evening.
Thank you.